So Sage, tell me when we're ready, okay? Please? Because I see it's six o'clock.
Here she is.
Hello, hello.
Okay. Good evening. I will call this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees to order. I will ask you all to rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will begin, Scott, with Merrill appointments, please.
Resolved, the mayor appoints and the Board of Trustees approves, Taylor DeVello to the position of part-time office assistant in the Department of Public Works at an hourly rate of $30 effective June 25, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. So there was someone working in that role who actually left recently for a different position outside of the village. And so we had to find someone to fill in in that capacity. So we are bringing Ms. DeVello on to fill that vacancy. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Resolved that the mayor appoints and the Board of Trustees approves the hiring of the 2025 seasonal park staff with an effective date of June 25, 2025. That is Noah Kent at $21 an hour and Ewan Dugan at $19 an hour.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Number three, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the hiring of the 2025 Cooper's Beach staff effective June 25, 2025. Lifeguards hourly rate based on tenure. William Owen is $24 an hour and Christian DeGaulle is $20 an hour. The beach attendant of $17 an hour is Tanner Marrow.
Okay. I will make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have correspondence to the board tonight. One is from Nicholas Aquavella. He's raising concerns over the growing danger and use of Captain's Neck Lane, especially during the period between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. We have correspondence from Jessica Mezacapa raising continued concern over the safety of Lee Avenue. And she advocates for a no-left turn between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll go to suggested resolutions.
Okay, Reso 1. The claims resolved, the claims for the warrant dated June 24, 2025, totaling $88,985 warrant number A3 General, $140,089 warrant number H1 Capital, $55,499 warrant number A2 Payables, and $32,975 warrant number T1 Trust are audited and approved. And I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. I want to raise a concern regarding one of the disbursements, specifically the $20,370 and $02 bill from Vince Toomey. I learned this afternoon that this invoice includes in routine disbursements also the charges from Suzanne Dugan, the ethics attorney based in Washington, DC. Her services are entirely separate from Mr. Toomey. And yet her billing is being embedded within the invoice rather than presented as a separate invoice transparently to the board so that we can approve it. As a trustee, I have a responsibility to know what we're paying for and who we're paying. Embedding a second attorney's fee in another's attorney's bill, especially when that attorney was hired for a sensitive and independent ethics matter, is not, in my opinion, acceptable practice. It lacks transparency and prevents proper oversight. So before we vote for this disbursements in particular, I would like to suggest a separate resolution engaging Suzanne Dugan as the ethics attorney and then a resolution appropriating funds to pay her alone. And Mr. Toomey could resubmit his bill for the next board meeting without those charges. And then we can approve them separately. We need to be able to see those numbers clearly if I'm going to approve my bill.
Yeah, I think this was done by the treasurer, but I don't know, Eileen, if you, the attorney, have any view on this.
There's nothing wrong with putting it inside of Vince Toomey's bill. I mean, that's...
Yeah, but it's a separate attorney. And for a separate matter...
You know about it. It's been discussed publicly at meetings.
Well, but we don't know about it if we don't see it in the warrant.
But you do know about it.
Well, because I got a copy of the bill.
No. I mean, yes, maybe. But also because it's been discussed publicly.
Yes. But I didn't know how it was being paid. And I have to approve it.
Eileen, your mic is not there.
If I'm going to approve it, I'd like to see it.
Sorry. Okay. So, I mean, what is your question?
I don't know. I mean, he's asking now that we are not going to pay this bill until we get it revised or something.
Well, I mean, that's a question for the rest of the board. Are they aware of the Suzanne Dugan invoice? Do they need it to be voted on separately? You could separate it out now. I could do, you could do an oral resolution, you know, and separate it out and vote on it if you feel necessary. I don't think it's necessary, but it's up to you.
I don't think it's necessary either. In my opinion, we did discuss it. We discussed it in executive session. We discussed it openly. We all knew what was going on. So I don't see what the point is. That's my opinion.
And now you're going to vote on it as part of the warrant, so...
And in the years that I've been trustee, I don't think we've ever broken out attorney's fees by which attorney is being paid. If I go back to previous Mayor Warren's administration when numerous legal fees were the result of his actions, we never broke out those fees by which attorney we were paying to defend the former mayor. So I'm not sure why Mr. Simeoni is bringing this point up, but I agree that it's not necessary to break it out because it would be different practice than we've done in the past.
For complete transparency, Mr. Simeoni, you were aware of it. We discussed it in executive session. You brought it up in the debate. It was clearly transparent, as well as the public knowing about it. It feels as though it's a last-minute disruption and dig. But the thing is, let's explain this to you. The correspondence from the ethics legal expert, the leading in the United States, stood on the law, exonerated me by the law, not in any violation of municipal law or state law. And for that, I always said, justice will prevail. So I thank my members for supporting that. And you did as well behind closed doors. You need to be transparent yourself, open and closed. So I vote that this was all known. You seem to be the only one with a lapse of memory. And I'm sure that we can have our attorney refresh your memory after this in executive session, if necessary. But I thank you all. And once again, an advice and an opinion by a committee is that. Advice and an opinion, which I was exonerated by the law, New York state law and municipal law. Are you not one that opposes the law, Mr. Simeoni?
The only thing I'm saying is that the invoice...
Question.
The only thing I'm saying is that the invoice...
Are you one that opposes the law?
The only thing I'm saying is that the invoice from another attorney...
I didn't ask you that question.
But I'm giving an answer. For that invoice should just be shown separately. That's all. So we know what we're voting on.
Wonderful. Now, the question is...
Excuse me. To Roy's point, that this has never been done before and it's always been done this way. I wasn't a trustee when that was going on, but I was a member of the Budget Committee. And I do recall that that's what the practice was.
These, as you know, Ed, are warrants for expenses incurred by the village.
Right.
We have an obligation to pay them.
Correct.
I think probably we should go ahead and pay our bills. I think that's the responsible thing to do.
But maybe we can do a resolution to separate the bills. That's all. I mean, I was just saying that the bill...
Does the board want to separate them, Roy?
There's no, we never have...
Do you want to separate them? Do you want to separate them? Okay.
Yeah, we never do special resolutions for different bills.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. The bills have to be paid by the village.
Number two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the June 12, 2025 Board of Trustee meeting is dispensed, accepted, as filed by the village clerk. And the actions taken are hereby ratified and approved. And I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the village of Southampton has created the position of construction equipment operator. And whereas the village is required to establish an initial salary schedule for the position, now therefore be it resolved that Southampton Village Board of Trustees establishes the following salary for the position of construction equipment operator. I will say it's a scale that starts in year one at $93,200 and after the fifth year is $102,964. This is available in the minutes of the clerk. The next appointment would be based on step one, which would be $95,064.28.
All right. So we have to vote on Resolution 3 first. And this, again, was done in coordination with Civil Service for Suffolk County, yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And this is the highest level you can get to if you're a heavy construction equipment operator?
After five years, they were $2,900.
But this position of construction equipment operator is for the highest level of a...
Yes. It's for specific talents for operating equipment generally beyond what a typical, say, equipment operator could operate.
Okay. All right. I'll make the motion.
Discussion.
Yep.
I'm just wondering, why are we creating this special category of construction equipment operator? What brought this about?
There are equipment that the village has interested in acquiring that require a very high-level person to be able to operate them. It's not just a regular CDL license. So in order to do that, we had to create a new position that's in the civil service, you know, delegation of positions. And so the village, at the request of Steve Phillips, were creating this position so that there can be this additional position added to the DPW staff.
So it's new equipment that we don't have now?
Honestly, I'd have to talk to Steve specifically about what level of...
If I can clarify. Whenever you're going to ask someone to work out of their existing title, which his was heavy equipment operator, whenever you're going to ask him to take on new responsibilities, particularly new equipment that's going to be planned on and a specific role with regard to what's called the MS4 program. So he's going to be doing, that's a lot of drainage, stormwater mitigation, a little bit more arcane, a little bit more specific, a little bit more working with the engineers than a typical heavy equipment operator. Whenever you're going to assign new duties, you have to look at whether the existing title allows you to do that. And if not, you have to create a new position that's better reflective of the new responsibilities that you're asking the employee to do. So what you do is you submit the duty statement of those responsibilities to Suffolk County Department of Civil Service. And they come back with what's called the classification or is the definition identified. They say, this is the title. This should be assigned to this particular individual. A lot of the work he's going to do would have to do with stormwater mitigation, keeping water from getting into the creeks, things like that. It's part of the federal requirement called the MS4 program. He'll also be working more directly with engineers.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. So I made the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right.
Bill, if I could just, I just was advised that the Zoom link in the agenda is not allowing people to get onto the Zoom. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
Okay. Sage? Can you look into that? Okay. Thank you.
Whereas the village of Southampton has established the position of a construction equipment operator. And whereas the village wishes to promote Stephen Elliston to this position, now therefore be it resolved that effective Wednesday, June 25, 2025, Mayor Mangar appoints and the Board of Trustees approves Stephen Elliston to the position of construction equipment operator at step one of the salary schedule, $95,064.28 established by the Board of Trustees for this position. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent by the village clerk to Stephen Elliston and to the CSCE unit president.
All right. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the budgeted salary increase for building inspector David Harper to $76,586 effective June 27, 2025. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve the village Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of Dylan Henderson from the Ocean Rescue Junior Lifeguard Program effective June 24, 2025. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve the village Board of Trustees, upon the recommendation of Chief Alex King, Southampton Village Ocean Rescue, hereby appoints Trevor Parker as a paid instructor for the Southampton Village Junior Lifeguard Program to replace Dylan Henderson. The stipend for the position remains at $1,250 for the program. So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight. Whereas traffic congestion in the village of Southampton has been an increasing problem for over the years. And whereas residents on streets south of Hill Street have reported a continuing increase in traffic on their streets during rush hour, thereby interfering with their quality of life, including the ability to safely reach their homes. And whereas the village Board of Trustees asks the village's traffic engineers, VHB, to review the continuing traffic issues and to specifically make recommendations aimed at helping to alleviate a cut-through traffic to residential streets, including those located south of Hill Street. And whereas one of the suggestions by the engineers at VHB was to completely close off Ox pasture road east of Halsey Neck Lane, thereby creating a dead end at Ox pasture road just east of Halsey Neck Lane. And whereas closing Ox pasture road at that location would not prevent any residents from accessing their property, nor would it prevent emergency responders from reaching those properties. And whereas closing Ox pasture at that location will make it less convenient for motorists to avoid Hill Street by cutting through Ox pasture road and thus may help alleviate the congestion on those residential streets west of Halsey Neck Lane, which are currently being used to avoid stretches of Hill Street. And whereas the village Board of Trustees is willing to implement such road closure on a temporary basis to calculate its calming effect, if any, on the traffic of these residential streets. And whereas the village of Southampton has the ability to temporarily close Ox pasture road just east of Halsey Neck Lane utilizing a barricade system, now therefore be it resolved effective Monday through Friday, June 30, 2025, through July 11, 2025, excluding July 4, 2025. Ox pasture road shall be closed off east of Halsey Neck Lane, thereby preventing traffic on Ox pasture from reaching Halsey Neck Lane from the east. And be it further resolved, the village Board of Trustees shall evaluate the effectiveness of the pilot program after two weeks to determine whether the pilot program should be extended, terminated, or made permanent. And be it further resolved, notwithstanding the above, that the chief of police shall have the authority to temporarily terminate the program at any time if she determines termination is required for public safety. I'll make the motion.
Second.
And I would like to call the chief to maybe just address this, if you will. I know there was much discussion after the last Board of Trustees meetings. And we heard from many of the residents on Lee Avenue and Captain's Neck Lane about this. And now we've also received another letter from a resident of Captain's Neck Lane about this. So I'm going to turn it over to you, chief.
Okay. So basically, this was a recommendation that came out of the traffic consultant report. And it's one of the things that the board wants to try by essentially making Ox pasture road a dead end at Halsey Neck Lane and First Neck Lane. So in order to do that, if this resolution does pass tonight, DPW will be tasked with putting out the digital signs informing people of the new change in traffic pattern and of the dead-end road. They also are going to be responsible for, you know, when this does get implemented on the 30th, putting the cement barriers up along with barricades and orange barrels, along with the proper signage for do not enter at the end of Halsey Neck Lane and Ox pasture. We're also going to have TCOs and police officers at the intersection of First Neck and Ox pasture. Probably most of the time, this pilot is going on only because I think in the afternoon, we really want to deter motorists and give this a chance to see if it works. And it may not work. It may push the problem down. But we're not going to know unless we try. We're going to have drones up to watch the traffic patterns to see if it adversely affects the roads in and around the area. We're also going to have enforcement efforts on the streets that we think the traffic may flow to to kind of deter, like we deterred on Somerset, Bishop's, and Corrigan. It's going to be a little bit of a big undertaking. I think the first two days might be a little messy, just like with any pilot. But we did this for Somerset a couple of years ago. It lasted a month. We decided to go with the cement barriers because when we did Somerset, people just moved the barricades and went about their business. So I do think it's worth a shot. If it doesn't work, then maybe we explore something else that was recommended by the traffic consultant to help bring relief to the Lee Avenue residents, Captain's Neck Lane residents. You know, it's a pilot program. It's going to have some...
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for the chief?
Have you heard any feedback? I sent a memo out to the traffic committee and really it was one or two questions, but nothing...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from anyone other than board members. You know, I will say the town pilot program really helped us traffic-wise. I mean, when you, you know, when people find out that it takes seven minutes to get from 7-Eleven to the Lobster Inn, they're going to stay on County Road 39.
Yeah.
And our side feeder roads really were, you know, it was empty. Our ticket numbers were down for the two-week pilot program after the second day. So it really did help. And I hope that they can do something moving forward with that end of it because it did help the village.
Chief or Mayor Mangar, do we have the capability or have we done it but to notify the people on Ox pasture that who live on that street that this is happening?
Yes. So the residents from First Neck Lane, on Ox pasture between First Neck and Halsey Neck Lane, we drew up a letter for them. We're going to deliver it to everyone's mailbox. Those residents will be allowed to access that portion of the road because they live there, obviously. And if they have work being done on the site, those vehicles will be allowed down. But we also are going to send the letter that we drafted and put it in the mailboxes west of Halsey Neck as well because they're not going to be able to go eastbound on Ox pasture past Halsey Neck Lane. So we're going to do that. We'll put it on social media. We're going to put it on the village's website. But we are going to hand-deliver these letters to people so they are aware. And that's going to start tomorrow as soon as Eileen gives me the okay with the letter.
Of course, the concern is it just goes over to Great Plains.
That is the concern. I did have Steve Phillips have Bob hand-move one of our speed cameras over there because we can get data from that to see if there's an increase in vehicular traffic. I'm going to get the data. Hopefully, if we get it up today, we can get at least a week's worth. But that's going to be, you know, very helpful for us to see if, you know, this did create more traffic on Great Plains. And then they end up on Lee Avenue anyway. So and I also am having the speed camera on Lee Avenue flipped so it can clock cars going northbound during this pilot to see if there was a decrease or if it was just the same old amount of traffic on Lee Avenue.
Yeah. And I heard some comments from members of the traffic committee who said they're willing at this point to try anything to try and mitigate the congestion that they experience in the afternoon in front of their homes.
Yeah.
So I said, look, we'll try this for, you know, two weeks and see what the outcome is.
Right.
But it's worth trying this to see if it has merit as VHB has recommended it to us.
Right. I mean, anything we do is going to have a negative effect somewhere else. It's just a matter of getting something tweaked to the point where it can just improve their quality of life a little bit, like it did on Somerset with the constant enforcement Bishop's and Corrigan.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Resolve the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor of the Village Board of Trustees subject to the approval as to form of the village attorney to execute an agreement with Garnett Depesquale Projects LLC, GDP, for architectural services related to the planned rear addition and third-floor renovation at Southampton Village Hall for the sum of $300,000, which includes the cost of additional consultants, e.g., engineers, et cetera, as necessary and approval to be paid from capital projects. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry, but I recall the presentation that was made, which was very good.
Yeah. I think you actually called it magnificent.
It was magnificent. But I also said that the cost was magnificent. We're talking about $2 million.
Yeah.
And this $300,000 is only for the architectural services alone.
No, no. It's also including engineers and other consultants that needs to be brought in to...
For the whole project, for the $2 million project.
Correct.
Quite frankly, I think these funds can probably be directed to better use, for example, for critical infrastructure or for the sewer system. And, you know, I'm also wondering if maybe we can get an estimate of a cost of just doing the third floor instead of having to also do the back of the building as well.
But that was a life safety issue because you need to have a viable other means of egress, means of, of egress, exit, in the event of a fire from the third floor.
And you can use the egress that you have right now, you know, create an egress with the stairs falling down.
It's a fire escape, right.
A fire escape, right. I mean, there, there is an egress right now with the fire escape, so you, you don't have to...
There is.
You don't have to do the, the improvement in, in the rear that we're talking about, which is probably the major part of the cost of the thing. So before approving this $300,000 expense, maybe we want to see if there's a way, or maybe we would want to consider just doing the third floor versus the whole project and see what that comes out to.
Well, my, yeah, my position is that the third floor has been not utilized now since the police department moved out, how many years ago, chief?
2001.
2001. So we've had a vacant third floor since 2001. It's time that the village take care of this building, and I think in the interest of safety, having something that is more substantial than the, the rickety metal staircase that's clinging to the outside of the building is probably preferable. It also changes the rear entrance to this to make it a more welcoming entrance to Village Hall, making it more accessible from the parking lot. Many people who come here, and as you know, park in the parking lot, and they wanna enter, enter the building through the rear, not have to walk all the way around to the front, and this door is always locked. I wanna make the improvements that, at this point, I think are necessary. If you don't wanna vote on it, you don't have to vote on it. It's fine, Ed. That's not a problem.
Yeah. It's a $2 million project, so I don't know if we really need to go there.
Would, would, would you like just, just to leave the third floor like that? Do you like that? I think I've taken you up there, and you, you were kinda shocked when you saw it.
I think, I think what I suggested was maybe to get an estimate just to do the third floor without doing the rest of the project in, in the rear.
I, I, well, my personal opinion is it's not worth fixing the whole third floor up if we're gonna leave the mess in the back.
Well, I don't know.
So anyway...
I would ask the board to...
We have a, a motion and a second. Does anyone else have comments at this point? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next one. Ten.
Whereas the fire department has requested a Polaris Ranger Crew XD-1500, which will further help the Southampton Fire Department protect village residents, and whereas the fire chiefs have received a quote for said Polaris not to exceed $55,000, and whereas the fire department has open items budgeted within their previous year's capital budget and wishes to amend their capital budget to reallocate funds to purchase said Polaris now. Therefore, be it resolved, the Village Board of Trustees approves the purchase of a Polaris Ranger Crew XD-1500 at a cost not to exceed $55,000, and be it further resolved, the Village Board of Trustees approves the amendment of the 2023 through 2026 capital budget as follows. Remove new PACs $25,000 from 2023, 2024. Remove new PACs $30,000 from 2024, 2025. Add Polaris Ranger Crew XD-1500 with safety protection, $55,000 to 25, 26 capital budget. I make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Oh, yeah.
This vehicle has been requested by the fire department for some time. There, there are some driveways in the, in the village that are narrow enough that the fire trucks cannot get down them, and there are some areas of the village that do not have roads, so the fire trucks cannot access them, and this vehicle will enable our fire department to reach those areas. It's impressive that the fire department was able to source the funds for this without requesting additional funds from our budget by using unused items from, from previous years, and especially significant that thanks to the improved relationship that this village has established with the Southampton Fire District, the Fire District has agreed to pay for 40% of the cost of this vehicle, even though it would not be required under the agreement that they have with us. They are going to fund this because they also feel that this piece of equipment is necessary for our fire department to protect the village to the best of its ability. So I recommend a, a vote in favor of this resolution.
Okay. You're seconding it?
Yes.
Roman? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Eleven. Whereas the Department of Public Works Supervisor and the Senior Building Inspector have secured new updated quotes for the adopted capital budget, and whereas certain revised quotes resulted in budget savings while others exceeded the allocated amount, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget-neutral change to the capital budget and modifications as follows. Decrease highway hotbox with dump by $3,995, account H.510.300. Increase ordinance enforcement Chevy Colorado pickup truck by $3,995, account H.3620.20. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Whereas the Village Board of Trustees is working to improve Moses Park by installing new restrooms, and whereas the village requires the assistance of engineers to assist in designing a floor plan for said restrooms and to provide support for our sanitary permit application to the S C D O H for the proposed IA system, and whereas the village has secured a proposal from L.K. McLean Associates Engineering and Surveying to complete the requested work, now therefore be it resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby approves and authorizes the mayor to execute the proposal with L.K. McLean Associates Engineering and Surveying at a cost not to exceed $19,800. I make a motion.
Second discussion. I just wanna let everyone know that I did speak to the head of the CPF, the Community Preservation Fund, earlier today, Jackie Fenland, and she said that the board of the town, the town board, has approved for the village $45,000 to actually pay for the IA system that will be located in Moses Park. So we will do this engineering work, and then the town will come forward with $45,000 to pay for the IA system so that we have the most, you know, efficient sanitary system located there as we can get, achieve at this point. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Resolve: The Board of Trustees authorizes the village attorney and village assessor to enter into a stipulation to settle an Article VII tax lien litigation between the village and Hampton Center Realty related to property located at 64 County Road 39, Southampton, and further identify the Suffolk County Tax Map Number 0904-004-01-074.14 and 7-079.7. Said settlement reduces the annual combined assessed value on the property and resolves the claims for reductions for tax years 2016, 2017 through 2024 and 2025 for a lump sum cash refund of $20,600, $200,63,74 without interest as set forth in the proposed stipulation negotiated between the village assessor and for Shelley, Deegan, and Toronto, attorneys for Hampton Center Realty. The refund is payable in three annual installments of $87,691, with the first payment due on October 1, 2025, and the second, third installments due on or before August 1, 2026, and August 1, 2027 respectively. The combined assessed value for 2026 and 2027 shall be $249,400.
Can, can I just make one correction? It should say, it's my fault, it should say 20 through 26, 20, I mean, 25, 26, the tax year. So this covers 2016, 17 through...
No, not 24, 25.
Yeah, instead of 24, 25, it should be 25, 26.
Yeah.
And, and just...
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. After you, you want me to explain this now before you vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Typically, private commercial properties, New York State identifies, as they really should be assessed based on their ability to produce income, what's their potential income. This is a private facility. Assessors generally...
This is the nursing home.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, this is Hampton Care Center, long-term care facility. That is, in fact, private. The assessors typically assessed on a cost-of-construction basis, and the reason for that is assessors know what the cost of construction is, they don't know what the income is yet. You have to build the facility, you have to get it up and running, you have to produce the income so you can evaluate the value based on that. We had a small challenge here in that this, also, this company also filed a grievance with the town of Southampton, who's also an assessing agency. They produced an appraisal of $25 million. The village had an appraiser assign a, a value of 20, of $50 million. The town unfortunately settled at a valuation, an overall valuation, based on the value at $33 million. Puts us in a tough spot because here we are arguing to say that the facility is worth $50 million, and we have the appraisal to prove it. The applicant actually made the argument that because the income is capped based on a Medicaid-approved facility, it produces less income, therefore the value should be less. Southampton accepted that argument. We actually made the converse argument and basically said because it's a Medicaid-approved facility, which, which is a voluntary designation, it is actually, produces more income because the income, it produces more occupancy, and the income, when you have the federal government being the paying agent or the New York State, they're a guaranteed payment. So the value per bed was higher. Ultimately, we were able to settle by them agreeing to remove the first two years of grievance filed, which was for 2000, late 2013, all the way through to the tax year, eliminating all tax years up until we got to 2016. We were able to settle the overall value based on our argument and based on our approach at $43 million. So that was about 13 million more than the town did. We, we really couldn't go to full value because it's very difficult when a township with an assessing office settles at a number that's so low, it's very difficult for us to go to court and, and, and argue a, a value much harder than that. So I think we did very well. Also, the last thing worth mentioning is typically when assessments are settled, the applicant is entitled to a full refund for all past years. The problem is when you're operating with a small budget as a village, it's very difficult to absorb that kind of payback. We were able to negotiate payments going forward so that the payments will be factored into the next three budgets, which gives the Board of Trustees an opportunity to account for those funds as they add them to the budget rather than try to pay this huge sum back. That would be a very difficult thing to do. We were also able to get the applicant's attorney to waive all claim of fees for, for interest, which is not uncommon to pay interest on, on over, over-tax property. So anyway, sorry, that's a bit organic. I didn't bore you.
I wanna thank you and Bill McCoy, obviously, for arranging the settlement, which is preferable to the town's settlement, and certainly paying it off over the three years respectively is, is better for us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I was gonna actually ask for a explanation of how we reached this, so I really appreciate you being able to give such an exhaustive explanation.
And certainly, I'm always available to go over with more detail if you wanna come in. I actually have our appraisal and their appraisal, and I can show you where the differences were and where our argument was much sounder than the town's argument.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Resolve: The Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Neils Media for videography services for the village to document the Fourth of July Parade, subject to approval of the village attorney as to form.
Just another comment on that one also, Mr. Mayor. Late today, I got the, the village received the proposal, and the tot, the amount of this agreement's gonna be $2,500.
To, do, to produce the video of the parade?
To produce the video, yes.
All right. And I think it's a good thing to have so that we can use it in marketing donations to the parade as well going forward because it would be nice to have something that we can show and, and, you know, demonstrate to those who might donate to the parade what our parade is all about, and it's, it's obviously nice to have a recording of the Fourth of July Parade. I'm not sure if they are continuing to cover that, but we can also run it then on, you know, CTV and, and other cable channels for those that might be interested in watching our, our Fourth of July Parade. So I think this is a, is a very good thing to do. Any other questions?
Is this a request of the new parade committee?
It is, it is not. This was, this was something that I thought would be a nice thing to have so that we can record it and then use it as a, as a tool in hopes of getting donations specifically, actually, for next year because it will be the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and I think it would be, you know, we, we're gonna need to raise a lot of money so we can have a really good parade next year, and I think this would be a good tool to be able to, to show this to people so they know what our parade is about. Any other comments?
Do I need a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas T. Flora has filed a special event application seeking to host his wedding ceremony on village property adjacent to his family home at 123 Cooper's Farm Road, Southampton, and whereas Mr. Flora's application is for the wedding ceremony only was set up and takedown on the day of the event, and whereas Mr. Flora has agreed that there shall be no food or drink of any kind on the village property and that his guests will move to the family property at 123 Cooper's Farm Road immediately following the ceremony, and whereas Mr. Flora has further agreed that the village property shall not be used for any purpose other than the ceremony, there shall be no parking or vehicles on the village property at any time, and whereas Mr. Flora has agreed to provide an insurance certificate memory of the village as certificate holder as proof of sufficient liability insurance at least 30 days prior to the ceremony, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves of requests submitted by Mr. T. Flora to host his wedding ceremony on the village open space adjacent to his family home at 123 Cooper's Farm, wrote on August 9, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. in accordance with his special event application. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I will second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolve: The Board of Trustees approves the beach event application for 40 Meadow Lane on Friday, July 4, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for 150 guests. Parking exception letters will be provided and prominently, prominently displayed on vehicles during the event. I make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve: The Board of Trustees approves the beach event application for Gin Lane Beach on Saturday, August 16, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for 200 guests. Parking exception letters will be provided and prominently displayed on vehicles during the event. I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll go to comments from board members, although I did have a couple of things I wanted to mention before we do that, and that is that I think we should change the format of the work sessions going forward so that we act more like a real work session rather than sitting on the dais and just going over resolutions. I propose that we sit at the, the table here and use the microphones on that table and, and sit around the table and discuss, discuss, you know, obviously resolutions that need to be approved, but also other issues and topics that, that, you know, we need to discuss in public before the, the village and, and do work sessions the way many other municipalities do their work sessions. We're one of the odd municipalities that actually has a work session that's really just like a second meeting. But a true work session should be one where the, the board is seated around a table, the public obviously are, are here to observe, and that we would then participate in an interaction between the various board members on various topics. I, I don't know...
I, I think that's a great idea. In fact, I've been discussing that and proposing that in private. I would like to add a wrinkle to that, that maybe we could also have public comments so that we can not only talk among ourselves, but also get comment from the public and maybe have an open dialogue with them as well.
All right, yeah. Most work sessions don't work like that, but I thank you for your, your idea, Trustee Simeoni. Also, I want to propose that for 2026, that the Board of Assessment Review be made up of members of the community rather than members of the Board of Trustees. And so that wouldn't obviously happen until February when, when Grievance Day is held, but we would have a change in the way the Board of, of Assessment Review is conducted. Yeah. So I just wanna mention that now because I think I would like to put this on for the organizational meeting, which will be held July 7 after the inauguration ceremony on the steps of Village Hall. So there, there will be a meeting at 1 o'clock on July 7 as an organizational meeting, and we will add this as a part of the organizational meeting.
How would the residents be selected?
I think it would be by the, by the mayor, who has the power of appointment, and I would look at different people in the community and figure out who best could serve on this, on this independent board. All right, but with that, I do wanna then go to, to just regular comments from board members, and we'll start with Trustee Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me say that it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve Southampton Village. I'm just delighted that I can move on to the next things in my life, and what's so exciting to me is that I've accomplished so many of my goals with collaborative ventures, with innovative ventures, with the support of my board, so it's a wonderful feeling to be able to move forward, to have those things. If you allow me the time to just walk down memory lane a little bit to, to say thank you to different areas. And I'll first start with meeting our now chief of police, and I met her at Juneteenth, and she was lieutenant at that time. And what touched me so much is that she was excited about the relationship of the board and the police department coming together. That was a time where there was tension with the police and the board, and I must say that this is a time of where we are supporting our police, that we respect our police, that we hear what they have to say, and I think we have a really good relationship. And with that, I was able to move, and I was asked to co-chair and with Police Chief Search, and we yielded such a wonderful person from that. We can now tell how well she did as far as she scored in the top three with the Police Chief Search. My colleague was there to, excuse me, top three in the interview process when we had the Police Chief Search. You scored well as far as extremely high on your exam, and for that, we are very excited. We're excited that this was the administration, I was part of that administration, that's elevated, a chief of police, a captain, a lieutenant, and a sergeant, and that's great progress in just two years. And as we go down memory lane again for me, I'm so excited about being safety liaison. I'm happy about the innovative ideas that together we've done as far as our jet ski rescue, our drone patrol before the governor issued. I'm so excited about the work that was done. I'm excited about the biotechnology that I've introduced to the village, a way to heal our waters naturally, safely, economically, and I'm thrilled that the DEC has, has partnered with us as far as bringing all things together, as far as making sure things are done well and healthy, and it's just been a pleasure. It's been an honor to serve with our senior citizens. It's been an honor to have the junior ambassadors that were able to contribute to the government. It has been an honor and my pleasure, and I thank the village, and I will continue to support the village, and I thank you all. I thank the mayor and trustees for supporting my ideas, and I'm so grateful that together we've made a wonderful impact to our village. So I thank you, and I leave with joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Roman. I do want to interject here, if I may, and present you with a proclamation for your four years of service to the village. I'll read this out to everybody. Whereas the village of Southampton wishes to recognize trustee Robin Brown for her steadfast service to our community, and whereas Robin Brown was first elected to village trustee in 2021, reelected in 2023, and served those two terms with enthusiasm, thoughtfulness, and conscientiousness. And whereas Robin served on numerous committees, including the Youth, Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion Committee, the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, the Safety Committee, the Serve Committee, and the Environmental and Sustainability Committee, and whereas Robin served as a liaison to our famous Cooper's Beach, assisting in creating a quality, safe, and fun experience for all beachgoers. Her efforts have elevated Cooper's Beach to reach the status of the number-one beach in America, and whereas Robin has been committed to safety initiatives during her tenure as safety liaison, which include the introduction of taking safety to the streets, coffee with a cop, implementing drone patrol over beaches, fire safety tips, and CPR first-aid training programs, and where... programs. And whereas Robin also liaisoned to the Southampton Arts Center, Shinnecock African American Museum, and the Southampton History Museum, played a pivotal role spearheading awarded grant money for these cherished institutions. And whereas it takes the village to make positive change, her efforts have contributed to moving Southampton Village forward as a safe, vibrant, and environmentally proactive village. And now therefore be it resolved that I, William M. Magger Jr., mayor of the Village of Southampton, New York, to hereby proudly present this proclamation to trustee Robin Brown to offer her our thanks for her leadership and dedication to serving our village and our residents.
Oh, that is so lovely. That is so lovely. That is so lovely. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
All right. Now we will move on to trustee Simeoni.
Thank you for seeing Robin and Mayor Magger. I'm looking forward to the, this year's Fourth of July Parade, and I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to the Committee of Veterans Affairs for their incredible work year after year. The parade is always a highlight of our summer, and I'm looking forward to walking in it and showing support alongside so many community members from all different backgrounds. To those listening tonight, please know that this beloved tradition is funded by residents like you, and the committee truly relies on your generosity. I also want to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July, and please enjoy the holiday responsibly and take care of yourselves and one another. As a liaison of the Southampton Cultural Center, I am also excited to highlight a few upcoming events. On June 20th, we have the Piano Fest Concert from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. On July 2nd, we have our Concert in the Park Series, a fantastic summer tradition happening every Wednesday evening. And on Sunday, July 6th, the Cultural Center will host Stick and Stones Comedy, which promises to be a great night out, and I've enjoyed in the past. It's really worth going to see. There's a lot happening in our village this summer, and I hope to see many of you out there at these events, supporting the arts, our veterans, and our community spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Simeoni. We'll go to trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, we just concluded the election, which to me is one of the fundamental exercises of democracy. And as such, is such an incredibly wonderful and beautiful event that the people are able to select who they would like to lead forward. It's, it's a very interesting time as, as a, as a, as one of the candidates, and particularly an incumbent candidate, because it forces one to consider what one has accomplished in the previous years, and at the same time, what one would hope to accomplish going forward. And I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to continuing to work on some of the things that this village really feels is necessary, such as a sewer system and keeping our environment as protected as possible. At the same time, as one's campaigning, one must hear from what's one's opponents and what residents are saying. Alternate ideas, different opinions, criticisms, and that certainly gives one pause to consider. And one thing that I heard loud and clear during the, the campaign was a sense that perhaps we, this government does not communicate as well as we might with the residents. And I feel we, we, one can always do better. I feel we do do our best effort to, to communicate, but one can always do better. And I look forward to working with Nancy Kane, our communications person, and the rest of the board to see if we can do a better job of communicating the issues that are percolating through the board so that everybody's more aware of it. I definitely want to thank my compatriot, Robin Brown, who sat next to me and who I've enjoyed working with so much for the four years that we've been together up here. She has served with dedication, with truthfulness, and most of all, with kindness. And I will miss you very much. I, I won't have to worry about losing my pen anymore. But it really has been an honor. Thank you. I want to welcome Rob Colburn to the board and congratulate him and thank him for being willing to take up the mantle of service. It is very rewarding, but at the same time, it is work. And I know he has the shoulders to carry that burden, and I look forward to working with him on, on the important issues facing the village. At the conclusion of the election, it, it's almost a spiritual event to feel that, that a large number of people in the village have voted for you and have given their trust to you to represent them in the best interests of the village. And I, I appreciate that, and I pledge going forward to continue to do my best to see that any decision I make is, is done in, in the sense of the greatest interest of all the people in this, in this wonderful village. So thank you very much for everybody for, for putting up with the signs and the people knocking on your doors and the daily emails and all the stuff. It was a great period, and now it's over, and let's get to work with my fellow board members and get some things done for this village. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. Trustee Zananti.
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I would like to commend our village clerk and the staff who conducted the election last Friday. The hours were very long and tedious, and the final results were not announced until very late in the evening. And I just want to commend Kathy for all her hard work and the staff. Secondly, I want to thank Robin for your dedicated service to this village and for our friendship, and our friendship I know will endure.
Of course.
This being election season, I could not help but think about my election a year ago and my campaign for trustee and how honored I am to be elected to serve in this capacity. In terms of recapping for the year, when I campaigned, I campaigned on the themes of fiscal sustainability for the village, physical sustainability for the village, and social sustainability for the village. And that would include our residents as well as our employees. Our budget is sound, and we are on a very firm financial footing, and that goes hand in hand with accomplishing the goals that I particularly were interested in accomplishing with respect to infrastructure and physical improvements. As we look around the village, we see how we are protecting our assets, maintaining them well. I'm excited about the third floor work in this building, the bio swales, the list goes on and on. With respect to social sustainability, we've engaged the residents earlier in, in last fall with the Clean Water Task Force to explain the logic between, about the sewer treatment plant and the work we're doing to keep our water bodies clean. And it continues with our traffic mitigation efforts with this, with the Southampton Village Traffic Committee and our work to try to discuss and vet ideas that will help us as we have piloted tonight with our resolution, as well as our efforts to keep our water bodies clean. With respect to our employees, I believe our relationship with employees is better than it has been in the recent past. We settled a long, open contract with our dispatchers successfully, and importantly, we've just settled with our PBA, which, which was also very satisfactory for them and for the village. So objectively, looking over these last 12 months, I think this board has been very successful in meeting the goals that I expressed that I would like to see, and I look forward to accomplishing more objectives and more achievements in the year to come. And again, I wish everyone a good night and a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, trustee Zananti. So again, I want to just speak about a few things that I've gotten comments on in the village. One is the state of Hampton Road, which is still in a state of disrepair thanks to National Grid and them coming in with a new gas main that is still being connected to the businesses and the other, other people that are along Hampton Road in the western section of that road. Once that is completed, which I have heard will be later in the summer, unfortunately, they had something like 80 businesses to connect. We do have money that National Grid has provided to the village already, several hundred thousand dollars, for us to then repave that road curb to curb so that then the entire length of Hampton Road from Main Street to the eastern border of the village will be repaved. The new stoplight on the corner here to, over my left shoulder, at Main Street and Jobbs Lane is almost complete. The contractor is coming in to put loops in the roadbed so that it can sense when there are cars waiting at the light. And again, it's quite complex with a computer system that then will, will change the light to allow the free flow of cars at that intersection. But unfortunately, they have to do a little more work on the brickwork. I've gotten questions, why is the brickwork still a mess? It's still a mess because there is still some work that needs to be done, specifically on that corner where the stoplight is. The curb is going to be bumped out a little bit to make it safer for pedestrians and also safer when cars make that turn onto Jobbs Lane, that they can't zip around the corner quite as fast, and we won't be in danger of having a car sideswipe the new stoplight, which is actually very close to the road at this point, and that's why the orange barrels are out there to try and protect it from being sideswiped. You may see that we also took up some bricks in front of Village Hall today because I had our DPW staff redo our kiosk, which is a larger version so that more can be posted outside to the public, and that will be finished very shortly, and the bricks obviously will be re-installed. But, but I think it's going to be a much better kiosk, because the other one was really falling apart, and this one really is, is very solidly built by Wayne, who's one of our outstanding carpenters in the village. I do want to mention some events that I have attended recently. On the 13th of the month, I went to the Our Lady of the Hamptons graduation at the Basilica. On the Friday, this Friday, the 27th, I will be attending the Southampton High School graduation. You can tell it's graduation time. I also have attended two Juneteenth events, one two weekends ago that was put on by the Southampton African American Museum, and this past weekend, the one that was put on by Nisi Smith in Agawam Park. Trustee Simeoni was there as well. On the 14th, I attended the Rose Show at the library, which was actually fascinating. I've only been to it twice, but it really is quite amazing to see what people can produce in their gardens. It's just magnificent and quite beautiful. On the 16th, I went to the Intermediate School for a ribbon cutting for their new food pantry that they have out on Leland Lane. So people can leave food and pick up food in that food pantry. Molly Bishop was alongside me as we cut the ribbon, and that is a great project that the Intermediate School wanted to have for those in the community that are less fortunate so that they can, again, go to that food pantry and find food and, and things that they need. On the 21st, I attended the reopening of Rogers Memorial Library. I got to cut the ribbon there. That was very well attended. It was fantastic to see the renovation they've made there. They've added a cafe and an outdoor terrace, and I certainly want to thank all the donors who made the renovation possible because it was, it was not an inexpensive renovation, but it really is quite, quite beautiful. On the 22nd, I went to celebrate at Our Lady of Poland, the retirement of Father Janus, who is leaving Our Lady of Poland over there on, on Maple, and I wanted to be there to wish him well and attended a little reception they had at 230 Main, otherwise formerly known as the Polish Hall, which was, which is a lot of fun. I hadn't been in there since, actually, it was the Polish Hall. And then on the 23rd, I went to the elementary school at the request of Superintendent Morell to do a kickoff for a summer reading program that she's initiating for young children, and she and I read a book together on the steps of the elementary school to the children. And it was, again, well attended by children and, and parents alike, so I enjoyed that very much. They keep me busy here. Anyway, and then I also just want to say that, because we're talking about Fourth of July coming up, I was asked to remind everybody that the Presbyterian Church will be having their traditional hot dog sale on the corner of Meeting House Lane and South Main Street on the Fourth of July, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And so for those of you that are hungry and would like a hot dog in the middle of the parade, you can take advantage of that. And finally, I would just like to, again, thank everybody for their, their confidence in, in my reelection. I appreciate that very much, and I hope I see everybody at the Fourth of July Parade because it really is one of my favorite events, like you said, trustee Simeoni, and I think it's one of the best events that we have here in Southampton, and we're going to make sure that we pray for good weather, right? But with that, I think I will make a motion to...
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, can I just...
You're interrupting. No, go ahead.
Two quick comments I want to make. First, when I interviewed for this position in June of last year, I was actually nervous for the first time in over 30 years of elected service.
I hope you're still nervous now.
Trust me, I'm nervous every day. But I do have to tell you, I've gotten to work with all you, all of you to varying degrees. I want to say trustee Brown, working with you, you've always shown a tremendous grace, a deep commitment to the community, and a genuine care for the village. And I think this community got a very, very good trustee when they elected you, and I wish you the best moving on.
Thank you.
I also want to say, I was, I was elected, I was involved in nine elections as an elected official. I also had seen numerous, I'm sorry, numerous elections with regard to park districts, fire departments, all sorts of things, libraries. As a former president, I just want to compliment and actually say thank you to our village clerk, Kathy, I don't know if you're still here. She runs such, she ran such an efficient campaign, I've never seen anything like it. It was smooth, it was efficient. I want to congratulate everybody that was there working. The count was actually not just twice, which is typical for an election like that, but it's counted a third time at the request of a third party. So she did all she could to accommodate everyone, a very smooth operation, and I just can't say enough about how, I think how lucky we were as a community, and I say that with someone with over 30 years of government experience in, in elections, so many, so many elections at so many levels. So anyway, I want to congratulate her for the job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Well said.
And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Village Board of Trustees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.